And taking notes?
Yeah, yes. Penny will take notes, Aaron will assist tonight since Sandy's not here.
All right, well, I'll call and roll. Jim?
Here.
James?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah's running late and Sandy won't be here and I am here.
Okay.
All right, I have proof of posting. We join you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the agenda. Come on, we'll give a second. Thank you. Any changes?
No.
Okay. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. There are motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 27th. Do you have a second? Thank you. Any corrections? Kim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. I do have a motion to approve the payroll accruals and disbursements. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Or hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. In the interest of time, since we have David here tonight, I will forego my report. Mark?
Sure, a couple of updates to the board. We were at a boundary appeal hearing down at the DPI on May 5th. We lost one, two. The small schools voted for us, the medium and large schools voted against us. There's a procedure for it. I'll share really quickly the factors. One is geographical and topographical characteristics affected by the district. Two, educational needs of the student. If the proposed territory is to be detached, is there an adverse effect on any of the programs? Then there was testimony and then cross-examination by both sides. Estimated fiscal effect on the proposed reorganization on the affected school districts. Whether the proposed reorganization will make any part of the schools, school districts, territory non-contiguous. Then impact and socioeconomic level racial composition under a couple of state statutes and then other factors. So, in the end, the reasons for allowing two properties in the Towne Berry to be detached was the parents would like to vote in the school district in which their students attend. Best interest of the students. There's also emphasis given to making sure that parents have as much time as possible spending with their children. The people that requested detachment, they've appealed our decision. We said no. Middleton said yes. They were involved in the community enrollment. The argument was three students won't negatively impact. And then bottom line, in the best interest of the child. So, a lot of questions. You know, we spent the better part of two hours in the hearing and the decision was made. They ruled in our favor in terms of economic impact. And, let's see. There was no discussion in terms of who had a better school district, who had better educational programs. But on the other hand, it really pointed back to what would benefit the children. And since they were already attending there, that was, you know, it appeared pretty much halfway through the hearing that it would probably be two, one. So, we argued that it would have, there was a great potential impact on the Towne Berry. Because three, two properties are detached, everything stays the same, that means residents in the Towne Berry, there's a high probability there'll be a change in how they're taxed based on the school district levy. And so, we contested it because we thought that was in the best interest of our residents. We also asked for predictability. We want to be able to attract people, retain people. And we also believe that because open enrollment exists, there was, there is a way for students to attend a different school. When boundary appeals were occurring, especially, you know, in the 70s, 80s, before, in 90s, before open enrollment, the only way to attend another school was tuition or get placed into the school district. So, what will happen this year, from what I can tell, is that they'll pay property taxes, you know, half the year with us, half the year with the Middleton cross planes.
So, in who were the hearing?
Good question, yeah, thank you. There are three people. They are all board members in the school district. So, Wazou, Wazaki, which is north of Kribitz up 141, about 70 miles, 80 miles, north of Green Bay. South Milwaukee, as it states, south of Milwaukee, kind of semi-urban, suburban, and then also. And so, that's what I have.
Those are all bigger school districts, right?
Well, South Milwaukee is considered a medium size. They're probably about 2,500. So, big compared to us in terms of medium. There's large and then there's, you know, we're just under 50% in terms of our size and compare our median. We're almost at the median size. So, the reality is there's about 40 districts that are significantly larger. I think 40th largest district is about 4,000. There aren't a lot of them between 1,000 and 2,500. So...
What was sent for?
Well, they can, you know, that's, it can be appealed every time we make a decision. So...
And there's different people on the committee each?
It's my understanding they rotate, but they come down. They are having hearings this spring, about five or six days. My guess is those people are there for a day or two a year. But they understand the process. They've heard the, you know, the concerns and, you know, in the end, you've got to, the goal is to get that second vote. Us is not here tonight. Capitol top 10, so the top 10 students from every school in the Capitol Conference are getting together tonight and recommending. That is also why Sandy is away. Wonderful FFA banquet last Sunday, fantastic opportunity, also fundraiser for one of our students that passed away this year. So, that was very touching. This past weekend, you know, I didn't thank Isaiah if he was here, but both, you know, James, Cindy, Isaiah were very active and parting the part. Dale was smiling and having fun. It was a good time had by all. On Saturday, we also had the school record, 28 years old was broken. Rachel, 15, 11510. So, congratulations to her. And then a wonderful jazz banquet on Saturday night. We've had two studies recently completed. A safety study, we looked at placement of our cameras, and also a ergonomics study. Both are free courtesy of our liability insurance, EMC. So, we're working to make adjustments, I think, as I shared before, and if I haven't, all the desks that we have are set for six feet tall and no one in the office, maybe Rich is six feet tall, but, so we're, you know, making sure our employees have a good working environment.
Aaron's got to be close.
Pretty close.
Maybe next week. The safety study, we've been looking at that second phase of cameras. Part of that was, is how are we greeting people? What are, what are our entrances look like, security, but also placement of cameras and we'll be going through that this week and that will help us make decisions in the future. The adoptions, a lot of work put into this. Amy will share a little bit more about language arts and reading. We'll have recommendations. Later in the agenda, just two wonderful donations. I think that's what makes our district great. And lastly, state budget. Lot is being said, a lot. If you hadn't heard last week, you know, for the most part, there's signals from the Capitol that the reductions of the categorical aid will be put back in. What I want to warn people to do is understand that money has to come from someplace because there's no new revenue. Well, one thing called the property tax credit benefits Wisconsin Heights. That's probably where I think there's $110 million there. Guess where a lot of that money's coming from? So, even though some of the money's going to be restored in Wisconsin Heights because of our aid formula, we won't get as much money as highly aided districts. And we understand that, but I just want to point that, I think the biggest thing, and you heard it from Dr. Evers, is zero increase is still a reduction. We are not able to adjust to CPI rates. So, and then also you'll be seeing summer school staffing. We do have one update from your board packet based on, we have 15 middle school students, so we're recommending two sections. We'll also might be monitoring kindergarten, that's becoming large. And the adoption information will be presented to you later. Thank you.
Jim? Does anybody check that? Thank you. Good to go. All right. All right, so, as you guys can see by your, by your agenda, we have David Friedman, our attorney, here and he is going to cover some specific things, as you can see on here. And what he's going to do after he's done giving his, a little background about himself and covering these topics, he's going to open it up for questions by the board and then he will open it up to questions by the audience and covering basic general things, no specific cases or no specific items pertaining to anything going on or anything has gone on. So, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. Let's get up here so everybody can kind of see. I've had a long relationship with Wisconsin Heights. I had a long, was in college, I refereed basketball games out here. Some of you may be old enough to remember, I got a name, Gene Curtis, who was an egg instructor here, who did the best man at my wedding. So, thanks, I've got a long relationship. I've been practicing law since 1971. And I worked for Wisconsin Association of School Boards from 1973 to 1985. And since 1985, I've been representing that in the school district. I tell you this, I'm going to tell you some more stuff. I don't tend to brag about what I do or anything, but I think board members and audience members need to know a little bit. I've been fortunate enough to teach at UW Whitewater School Business Officials, Collective Bargaining and Contract Administration. That's a part of the past. I did the same thing at UW Madison or Educational Administration, taught for a number of years both those courses. Mark will know about this because I taught at Edgewater College, Edward College, for a number of years on the administrative program on school law to media. I have conducted seminars, both state, local, and national, on all kinds of school topics. So, I've had a wide variety of doing that. I also do seminars for the various programs that are around, like through Sterling Education's, a lot of them, National Business Institute, so I've done those programs. I sat on a Madison School Board Committee for four years. Interesting politics and dynamics in Madison, I'm going to put it that way. I'm a hearing law officer for the Office of Lawyer Regulation. So, when lawyer discipline cases come, I get to look at those. I was asked by, now the former Chief Justice, to sit on that. I think that's about 20 years ago, so I can do that. For the school district in Madison, I do expulsion hearings as the independent hearing office. So, I get to recommend to the district what they do with students. In fact, I've got another expulsion hearing, spent until Thursday morning. Some recognitions that I've had. I've been listed in the Best Lawyers in America for school law for about 10 years now. Super lawyers in Wisconsin, same thing, both education and labor law. And I was fortunate enough a couple of years ago to receive from the school attorneys the George Tipler Award for Distinguished Service in Education. I want to talk about a couple of other things that I'm really kind of proud of. I argued successfully to our Wisconsin Supreme Court a case, that one, that's kind of nice. They was unanimous. I don't think there are too many unanimous decisions coming out of that court anymore. I've also consulted with a couple of other attorneys on case outside of school law. My case was a landlord tenant matter. I consulted with one gentleman on drunk driving, appealed that one up, anticipated some of the questions that the justices were going to look at. Another one with part of Act 10, one of the attorneys I knew represented federal file of the Secretary of State. Again, helped prep the attorney for that question before I asked, I had anticipated. But I think the part that I enjoyed most was, one of the attorneys I, Sheriff of Space was, had a bankruptcy case going in the United States Supreme Court. And so, I sat in and helped prep the attorneys on that case. I would give my views on their presentations and other things. We won that case in 97. So, I tell you that, just to give you an idea, that I got a broad range of experience and people have been kind enough to ask my opinions and respect my judgment, so got a pretty good feel of how all this process works. So, that's what I wanted to give you a little bit about my background, so you know why I'm talking about. At least I think I do. One of the things about law you need to know is, there may have been a case came up this afternoon that changed is what I'm going to tell you. It can change that frequently. Our state Supreme Court issued a decision about a week ago, kind of changing the law on employment contracts. So, it's something you have to keep up with. I get a lot of different emails on topics from different organizations so that I can keep up on. I can go to seminars, but it's a changing field in education and employment law, student law. So, I say student law. That's expulsions, that's search seizures, all kinds of things that go on with students. So, the role of the attorney, this may surprise some people, I'm actually Wisconsin Heights School District Attorney. I'm not the school board's attorney, I'm not Mark's attorney. My client is the district. I get my directions from the board and from whoever the board directs. And so, there are times when I have to say to people, that's not in the long range interest of the district. That's different sometimes in the school board's interest, but that's what my role is by ethics standards. So, that sometimes surprises people when they tell them that. My job is to provide guidance to the district, to the administration. Explore things the same. You know, most of you have sat through some of this. I advise you, my opinions are my opinions. You are free to take them. You set the policy. I can tell you whether I think the policy's right, wrong, or whatever, but ultimately that's your judgment, it's not mine. I don't make those decisions. I'm not hired to make those decisions. I'm hired to help you do guidance on it. So, that's kind of the things I want to get out of the way a little bit. I want to talk about the open meeting law next, but before I do, a couple of broad points I want to make about this. One of them is, why does anybody call me on the open meeting law for public record law? There's a case from 1974 that says if a school district relies on the advice of the municipal council, and there's a violation of the open, of the public meeting law, going to the call session, that comes up, the board members are immune from violation if they rely in good faith upon the advice of the attorney. So, it's nice to listen to other people. You can listen to the attorney general, but my advice keeps you out of trouble if you rely on it. So, that's one of the reasons. The other thing about attorney generals' opinions, now I read a quote to you and I don't like to read things, and do on this one. Here's a statement from somebody, I'll explain who it is in a minute. "In the matter of statutory construction, the opinions of the attorney general is to be accorded greatly. However, the opinions are not controlling." Statement made by John W. Reynolds, who was the attorney general of the state of Wisconsin. His statement was made as a federal judge about the opinions of the office he helped. So, we rely on them for open meeting law, we rely on them for the public record law, but they're not binding, they're the opinion of another attorney. And we all look at them, but you have to come back, the bottom line is, they're just that. They're an opinion. They're persuasive, but they're not controlling. So, having said that a little bit. The open meeting law, pretty simple, we stop and think about it. What's it designed to do? It's designed to give the public notice of the time, date, place, and subject matter of the meeting. That's the basic principle behind it. You can also go in a call session for enumerated reasons. Most common one is 1985 1C, which is considering employment, compensation, promotion, performance, or evaluation there. But you're not required to. You can do that in an open session if you want to, and sometimes it's done. So, it's permissible, you have to vote to go in the call session. How much notice you give, that's debatable. Our court has struggled with this. At one time it gave a notice that a lot of us who did this thought it was pretty short and perfunctory, and then the court changed its mind. I've seen notices that are very detailed, and when we ask the attorneys, why is it? Because that's what the district attorney in their county wants them to do. So, you see notices varying from county, that county from school district to school district, but the idea is general notice of the business. That's the concept behind it. There's also another fallacy. The agenda is not notice by law. In practice, it is. So, most people just take the agenda and say, here's our notice. It works because it has all the information, but the law does not require you to use the agenda. You could have a separate public notice and a separate agenda. That's a waste of time, but legally you could do it. So, when people look at it, we tend to get, put them together, but they're really separate. It's also a notice to the public and to the news media, who have this question. So, that's a little kicker on the end of that. One of the things you won't find is exemption to go into call session for student records. It's not in the law. Yet no district attorney is going to prosecute you because state law requires those records to be confidential. So, even though there's no exemption, confidentiality for student records works. It's just, it has to, because you have no choice but to go in the call session, under both state and federal law, if you really want to protect the whole law. So, those we just kind of say, okay, even though it's not there, this is what we're doing because we need to do it. Do you vote in call session? The answer is yes. Do you have to come out of call session and announce it? Reasonable people disagree on this one? I take the position? No. Yet the need is still there. So, let me give you the best, the easiest example of this. You want to buy this farm up here. So, you want to go into call session to figure out how much you want to offer a farmer. Are you going to come out and announce, I'll put your amount of money, want to pay it? No. When it's all over and done, but yeah, you probably can. But when you're still in the process, you're not going to do that. And the law recognizes that. Recognizes there are reasons to keep it closed. If you're dealing with student records, it may never come out. So, there's some flexibility and some reasonableness in this. Most of the time, when the attorney general calls or the district attorney calls, they want to work it out. They want to work it out and make sure you know what you're doing. Enforcement is not their primary aim, education is. I've talked to a couple of DAs about this. We're not going to arrest people. We're not, we're not flying people. One district attorney told me, he said, you know, these are hardworking people, they sit on the school board. Their primary job isn't to know the open meeting law, is I want to educate them. I recognize the service they do, but I think that sentiment is with a lot of district attorneys. Judges the same way. Judges don't want to hear these things. Go work it out, folks, if you get one of those. And usually, it does work out. So, that's a really quick summary of the open meeting law. Do board members have any questions on this? Issues that you weren't into thinking about open meeting law?
What do they have to be posted?
The law doesn't say. Just to give notice to the public. So, what typically is done is, there's a provision in another statute that talks about posting in three places. So, where would you post? Here, probably one in the feed mill or somewhere like that.
Really do.
Not both municipal offices, right?
Municipal offices, yes.
And then the newspaper, right? But the newspaper isn't to the public, the newspapers are the newspapers. If you want it to the public, then you pay for the ad. But sometimes in rural communities, feed mills, general stock, you know, that's where people come. People don't always come to the post office. So, you have to know your community. So, where you post, in Black Earth may be different than if you post in the media. But it's to give the public, write in the public a notice. Internet is in addition, it's not...
Yeah.
HR people are, even, I'm, I am, school attorneys will get questions or I'll even see blogs saying, do we have to send notices even with meeting minutes? Do we have to have those printed? And the answer is yes.
We have not, the law hasn't caught up to the technology yet. And I'm not sure it ever will, because not everybody always has it, but posting in newspapers, come on, I mean, find newspapers in there. There had been a big debate for years as to whether you could use shopper slippers for posting. The law said no, because it wasn't technically a newspaper, because it didn't have paid circulation. But people put it in, in addition to it, to make sure notice got up.
What if, we have a monthly newsletter that goes to every household in the district? Where would that, where would that?
That's not an official, that's an, I'll call it an additional one.
Few more as a shopper type of thing?
Yeah.
Not a paid subscription.
Not a paid subscription. It's not technically posting.
But we, we sign to post municipal offices and say, the post office in each town, we're doing our due diligence to post it. I mean, we don't have to try to figure out where most of the people are going to go, right? We just have to post it.
Yeah, if you have reasonable notice. And in some communities, the post office used to be in someone's house. No, not reasonable. That's what I said, feed mills in rural areas used to be the place where farmers would come in and see. You've got a community population. Some places, they have grocery stores, some do pharmacies, they do banks, whatever you think's going to work in your community. And that's probably going to change over time. So, it's that notice out there.
What's the timing on that?
24 hours. Most people do way beyond that. Because you have a Monday night meeting, you're not going to, posting on Sunday isn't going to be reasonable notice to people. So, you've got to get it out before then. There is a provision that allows in an emergency to give two hour notice. On the 40 some years I've been doing this, I can count on one hand the figures left over the times in a genuine emergency.
I think we've had one since I've been on the board. There was one time, that was before you, and we had one time that there was an emergency we had to invoke the two hour. Yeah.
Like boiler glass.
Yeah. And then part of that is because there's another law that says if you're going to have a board meeting, you have to give each board member 24 hours notice unless board members consent. Either they all show up, or if you can't make it, you consent to a meeting. So, there's two provisions if you need a board meeting. One is the open meeting law, and the other one is, under chapter 120, you have to give notice to the board members. So, that's kind of why it's hard to get a quick notice because you still have to get all the board members there. And if, other than a boiler, if you have an incident with students or whatever, you're going to probably want time to think about, get your, organize your things done so that when you have a meeting, you are prepared. There aren't too many life, fortunately, there aren't too many life and death situations in school districts that can't wait 24 hours. You have a question?
Sometimes I get the question, hey, I just got, I've got a recommendation, you know, on a Monday, no, I can't put it on the board meeting for that same reason.
Yeah, it's...
That's not an emergency. Someone, someone's emergency is not the statute's.
So, let me talk about the public records law. And let me get rid of the misconception, it's not a public information law. It's a public records law. And so, what a record. Well, there's a statutory definition, but it basically means you somehow memorialize it. But it basically means you somehow memorialize in writing, in print, in email, whatever, of what just like, your board minutes are a record. The discussion, if it's not written down, is information. So there's been this debate over what goes in board minutes. Officially, actions. That's it. If you look at the law, that talks about wanting to know the official actions. That really isn't helpful for the public. So most boards put in what I'll call chit chat. And I don't mean it in derogatory sense at all. But that's what it is, it's not binding on people. So. Marquee report, people are at the conference banquet. That's chit chat. Should they go in the minutes? Yeah, because people want to know that. Does it legally have to go in? No. A motion to go into closed session, the vote to go in the closed session, that's in the minutes. Because that's an action that was taken. The same thing kind of for closed session minutes. What goes in there? Same concept. Sometimes, those minutes are part of the law. Sketches of long words, that's already come off on my head. Because in closed session, you don't want to necessarily put too much in there on the discussions. Because those minutes are accessible. And you may want to keep that confidentiality that was needed for that candor, for that discussion. You may not want that coming out all the time. Okay? So sometimes those minutes tend to be a little less full, a little less detailed than others. Do you have to record the votes of board members? If a board member calls for roll call vote, the answer is yes. Roll call votes need to go in the closed session. For anything else? No. And I will tell you, my advice is in closed session, voice vote. Why? Because when those come out, I have seen board members get picked on by the person who lost. They really make it difficult. Well, how can this get into a good change of your vote? You don't want to put yourself in that position if you don't have to. But you may, if you want to record them, but most board members would just assume, public votes, that's. Closed session votes, asks. Most board members do that. If you want to do it, typically, the board do do it that way. Let the board decide. That's my recommendation on that one. So you get a records request. How do you handle that? Well, there's actually a procedure in the statutes, but it's not real clear what has to be done. The first thing you have to do is determine whether it's a record. So I want to know, how much did it cost for this roof up here? So I make the request, doesn't matter where I live, what purpose it's for, I want to make a request of how much the roofing company gets. So first thing, the record custodian has to do is make a determination as to whether that's a record. Yes, clearly a record. Second thing is, is it releasable? Yeah, clearly releasable. But let's say what I requested now is the record of how many students in first grade get reduced to free lunches? Is that a record? Yeah. Is it releasable? I've got to go through them. Because what I don't know is, how many kids in first grade have reduced to free lunches? If it's three kids, you, somebody may be able to figure out who they are. Under the federal law, as opposed to the state pupil record law, if a student record, if people in the community would know who it is by the information that's released. So that may not be releasable. I've sat with boards and gone through minutes and taken out things that you wouldn't think might be violations such as that. Or how many special ed kids are in whatever grade level who have blah, 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 blah. Can't do that. So that's the balancing test that the record custodian has to do. Go through and see if it's releasable. If it's releasable, I'll get to the timeframe in a second. But it's a poll that there's stuff in there that is releasable and is not releasable. So you can redact, black out, you also look at marginal documents, that information. But if the record custodian says he can't release it, the record custodian has to identify why he can't release it. And whatever the record custodian says the first time is the reason, you're stuck with it. Either subsequently you find out, oh, there's more reasons we couldn't have had, uh-uh. Court say, you get one shot at getting it right, and that's the first time. So you've got to get it right the first time. So you would say, under the example I gave you about the number of kids on free lunches lunch, under pupil record law, federal pupil record law, you say all the citations to where it is, we're not releasing it. If someone wishes to challenge, they now have the reason why, and they can challenge the record custodian's decision. So it's got to be specific enough so that they can be challenged. The other standard is, you err on the slide of releasing it. If there's questions, pie goes to releasing it, that's the public policy. For employees, it's been a long, convoluted process. A number of years ago, there were court challenges about releasing records, especially of employees. They want to know what some teacher doing, so forth. So legislature came up with a system that says, here's what we're going to do. So a record is asked of teacher X. And let's say that record says, how many times has teacher X been disciplined for swearing at a student? We go through, and we say, uh-uh, it's happened. Got to notify the teacher, say, there has been, we're going to, we're going to release this. The teacher has a right to challenge, I'm just using teachers as an example. Has a right to challenge that decision in court, and get a court to say, no, you don't release it. So you have to hold for the time periods, and off the top of my head, I can't tell you, lose a five day and a few other days. You have to wait for the court to make that decision. If the court says, yeah, district's right, we don't release it. If the district's wrong, you've got to release it. Or the employee says, oh, court says the employee's right. District, you shouldn't release it. That's off the top. So it's that process that complicates some of this when you're asking for employee action records. Same, so it applies to students, student records are a little bit easier to deal with, but you get that in employees. The other thing the legislature did is it made a category of certain things that are not releasable unless authorized by law or an employee. Home addresses of employees, you don't get unless the employee says okay. Stuff like that. Here's a, we had a list of them. Emails, one of them, home emails. So it may sound simple to do some things. It's not. Another one that came to mind, tell me where the bus stops are for kids. Identify where your bus stops. Sounds rather innocuous, doesn't it? But take the thought, to do that, I have to give addresses. And those addresses are traced back to a family in which kids are there. So that's one of those, that's something, oh, that's easy to just give the request, and it's not quite that easy. I don't know if you do honor rolls. Some districts do, some districts don't. They ask for information, can't always disclose it. There's an opt-out for parents. They don't have to release information. So if you get a request for an honor roll, you've got to go through that list and make sure that if somebody's name on there hasn't said, no, you can't disclose it. We also have, under the student record law, directory data, things that we can release. When it first started, you couldn't even release the height and weight of people on athletic days. So that got amended. Because you, everybody put a program up, right? Had the program, weight, height, and year. When the first, when this first came out thirty years ago, you couldn't do that. So it's changed a lot of those things, but it keeps changing. In fact, the federal law has gotten tighter in the last few years. And then you have this issue of, unfortunately, shootings in schools. Virginia Tech was one of those, could we release the record to the student shooter? No, because of the pupil record, federal pupil record law. So they've changed some of the interpretation on that. So releasing records, looks like it's easy, straightforward, it's really complicated.
Well, what would be a quick definition for what is a record?
There isn't a quick definition. I won't tell you, because I took the language, and I'm not going to read the entire definition, but I will read you some of it.
Is it easier to tell us what's not a record?
No. Records and any material on which written, drawn, printed, spoken, visual, or electromagnetic, electromagnetic information, or electronically generated, or stored data is recorded and preserved, regardless of the physical form or characteristic, which has been created or is being kept by an authority. That's the definition of a record. What's not a record are drafts and personal notes. I've looked at about the half a dozen cases that involved what's a draft document, and have never seen one that called a play.
So virtually, any data that's.
Yeah.
That's composed by the district, received by the district.
Your records as an individual board member are also records. The law says.
Of the voting records?
Your notes. If you're taking those notes, except if they're personal notes, they're considered a record. So your doings and your scribblings are a record. But if you're keeping those, not for your own personal use, but for business use, I can't tell you the difference between them. I can't give you an example of what's personal and what's business when you're a school board member. Now, you may write down something, I think so-and-so, follow it, that's probably your personal opinion, not a record. Generally, about anything that's done in the course of business is a record. You get, Mark talked about cameras. Okay? We have an interesting problem with cameras. They record. That's clearly a record because that's visual. How long do you keep it for? Seven years. There's no exception for security tapes. I can tell you almost every school district in the state that has security tape is probably not keeping them seven years.
That's a lot of hardware, basically.
We'd be building every year, or purchasing every year.
Yeah, it's one of the issues, and I will tell you what else is an issue. Every student who walks through that door goes on tape, is potentially a student record. So I give you the example. We have a fight between two kids. Who gets to see that video? If parent one asks to see it, well, parent one can see the video of parent one's kid, but can he see parent two? Can he see kid two? Because the photograph of kid two is a record, that can't be released. There's an office, maybe, privacy, federal government, that had dealt with this issue of videotaping. They refused to give an opinion, and people have been asking for like six or seven years to get a definition, to do this. Well, you can pixel it. Uh, do you guys have the equipment to pixel it, son? Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how many school districts do. So there's this issue about public records, student records, that get intertwined between the two. Like I say, it's a public record of the security of the adults coming in here, it's also a student record of the students coming in. So how do you filter all that stuff out? It's not an easy answer. The best answer I can give you is, people are trying to be reasonable about it, but I've seen some really convoluted reasoning on the student ones about who gets to see what tapes and everything. That's what makes it difficult. So if somebody asks for a public record of the videotape of kids fighting, Mark's got to get rid of all the identifiable things with those kids on that record who want to release it on the video. And it may not be possible. That's part of the issue you run into, the clash between these different record laws. How do you balance them? In general, just from reading the cases and everything else, where student records are involved, you get more defense on what you can deny, just because everybody understands it's a morass. Nobody has a good answer to that one.
But when it comes to us, I think it makes it more complicated, right? Because as far as, like, I know at least with my experience, like, we may send emails back and forth through school emails, but if I reply to an email Tom sends to me on my personal phone, now I've opened the door for that to be subjected to open records.
Oh, yeah, that's why my advice to school districts and most of us is, use school emails. And I will tell you, there was a court, several months ago, on landlord tenants dispute, and the guy said, oh, I've got pictures of what it looks like. The judge says, okay, where are they? Guy says, they're on my cell phone. Judge says, you going to enter them in evidence? Yeah. Judge says, give me your phone. Guy says, what do you mean? He said, you're entering in the evidence? I'm holding the phone as evidence. Whoa, 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 whoa. That's giving you an idea of what this is coming down to. That's why you don't send them through your personal email, ask a former secretary of state about email, personal emails. It's an issue. It's a real issue about whose records they are, because if you keep them on there, your cell phone, your computer is subject to somebody going through and saying, I want to see what those records are.
For seven years.
Yeah, yeah. There was one, well, within the last four years, I'll say, four, five years. The attorney general's office has been doing seminars on open records, open meetings. They were giving the opinion, do not send emails. Well, come on, folks. That's the advice they were giving, which was ethically, we're going to curse in this day and age, but that's the advice they were giving, don't use them. They suggest only back off of that. But that's part of the problem.
And don't use social media.
Yeah. So those are some of the issues that, what it appears, you know, a public records law is a great idea in theory, but the application of it can get really tricky. And I have sat with a school board clerk for over eight hours, reading every single email to see what's in it. And what happens is, we get string emails. So Mark sent something to Jim, Jim comments, Tom comments. Now I've got to go through Mark's original one to Jim, Jim's to Tom, and a Tom response, it's in all of those. So you've got to go through and do that.
What can, what can the district charge for when it comes to, I know the answer, but what can the district charge for when it comes to open record requests?
Readable and necessary cost. And what that definition is? By statute, court documents are up to a quarter a page. I have seen legitimately, this is one legitimate cost. If you have to search for documents, there may be more cost. So this used to happen to people. The old records would start on the top wrappers of the bus bar. So you go up in the bus barn, and you find those old records from nineteen fifty, and you send some with the search. What people would do, they used to play this game, they would send the highest paid employee out to search. And it just wasn't salary, it was benefits. And they would bill that time. That's kind of gone by the wayside. But legitimately, if someone's out spending five hours searching through records in the bus barn, and they're making twenty bucks an hour, that's a legitimate cost. You should just take the salary, that's what was costing somebody to do that. To walk over to a photocopier, they stick a piece of paper, and, oh, come on. Figure out a reasonable cost. What's the cost at Kinko's, or FedEx, or some copy place? I think it's hard to charge more than what those are for a single copy. But you could put a charge on, one page is free, after five pages. One page is free, after five pages, it's 10 cents, 15 cents, I don't know, but what your copy costs then? Do they pay up on how you collect? There is a provision in the statute, I think, that says, I can't remember the number anymore. If it's beyond the sort of cost you can ask for money in advance. And I have to look it up, and most people don't bother remembering. Yeah, you can charge. And the question becomes a political one. Yes, I can charge. Do I want to charge? So some parent walks in, and the policy is school district, any copies made 15 cents. Some parent says, can you make this copy one one? Are you going to charge him 15 cents? Some of the policies go, come on, folks. That's the board decision, that's, that's where it is. If I authorize a document, it's supposed to charge you 50 cents, and they're doing. Any questions about those records? I want to talk about another topic that's little, you're going to wonder why, but it really gets back to board members' role as board members when they occupy other positions. So I want to talk about compatibility of positions, bias, due process, and conflict of interest. The underlying part of all those is fundamental fairness. So how does a board member deal with those if something comes up? The best example I can give you is, you get an expulsion hearing. You walk in and you go, oh, that's my cousin's kid, what do I do? Well, it depends about whether you like your cousin or not. Know the kid? But realistically, you probably know the kid. You know the family. So what, you know, if you went out every time's on the happen, you'd never get any damage. Our U.S. Supreme Court says that decision makers are presumed to be honest, and you're going to act with integrity. So what's biased? So I want to read below something to you here, and again, pardon me for reading, but here's a case our Wisconsin Supreme Court decided in 1976. It's a case in which a common council member investigated the wrong doing of someone, brought charges against the employee, presented the information at the common council meeting, and then voted on the information that he presented. Our Supreme Court said, that's okay. Surprise the heck out of me. But here's the, what they talk about, you can't be biased. So we know there's actual bias. Let me give you an actual bias case where, oh yeah, I remember that person, they slugged me when I was in sixth grade, I hate his guts. No question. Here's one of the other definitions, circumstances which lead to a high probability of bias, even though no actual bias is revealed in the record, may be sufficient to give the proceedings an unacceptable constitutional take. The alderman indicated, excuse me, a court decision indicated, there were two situations that clearly show a high probability of actual bias as be constitutionally intolerable. The first being a situation in which the adjudicator has a particular interest in the outcome. You can't have a bet on whether he's going to win or lose. And the second is where the adjudicator has been the target of personal abuse or criticism from the party before him. That's the standard. What your, that's the legal standard. What your internal standard is, is up to you. And I always say to people, can you make a decision? I mean, we ask jurors all the time, can you be fair and unbiased? Remember sitting in the jury pool, and someone says, I have a problem. I said, why? He said, I worked for the district attorney's office. And the judge said, that's okay. If legal counsel doesn't want to, they can strike him, but I'm not going to strike him. So we have a pretty broad range of what bias is legally. But I tell people, if you don't think you can be fair about it, excuse yourself. Thumb for abstain. And I will tell people, walk out. If you're holding a due process hearing for an employee or for a student, and you can't do it, my advice has been, you say, I'm leaving, please record it in the minutes I have left, and you walk out the door, and you're never part of that discussion. Regardless of how you vote, you may be able to influence people by discussion, that's my advice to everybody. It's much cleaner, it's simpler, it's the right thing to do. That's the ethical one. There's a statute, two statutes in Wisconsin. One is called the Conflict of Interest statute, and that's a monetary one where you can't vote on your own contract. I will give you a perfect example, and this is public. The ag teacher in Randolph, Wisconsin, served for three years on the Randolph, Wisconsin school board, and was never prosecuted. It's clearly conflict, and nobody bothers him. He shouldn't have been on that board for a couple reasons. But if you were a salesperson, and you also are a board member, you can't come into the state, come to the board and say, here, bias, I want to sell you this stuff, and I get a commission for selling it. Now, that's the statute Conflict of Interest one? That's pretty obvious. But there's also an ethics standard that we forget about, that has no monetary floor to it. Is anything of value? What's of value? At one time, the ethics board, and all the government accountability board, said a cup of coffee could have value. So when you go to the school board convention, and you walk over and you want to pick up that pen, I'm sorry. When it first came out, they said you couldn't do it. So then they said, if it's part of your reason for being there, and, you know, somebody, it's okay. They kept ludicrous about that kind of stuff. It used to be that you had, uh, school boards association, it had vendors having all these meals, great food. Technically, you couldn't do it. So what happened was they, unless it was part of the convention registration, so if you looked at the full sher's convention, you'd see that they were listed as part of the convention. So that's how they got along there. That one is just the one that says, I can't do this, I'm uncomfortable. Then don't make it. If you don't think you can be fair, don't do it. This one came up because I understand we've got justice of the peace here, right? So the question is, can you have compatible positions? There's a concept called incompatibility of offices. And again, I've got to read, I don't trust my memory. But I'll give you the one, it's the real one. The, a city assessor in Green Bay gets elected to the Green Bay Commonwealth. Our court says, no, man, man, you can't do that. Why? Because if you sit as council member, you are your boss's boss, and that's not right. That's an incompatibility of offices, because the duties and the nature of the two offices would render it improper for consideration of public policy for one person to mischarge the whole. So in that case, you got to give them one one. We have had for years the issue of incompatibility of public offices. Excuse me, what came up in school districts? Was the school board treasurer and the village treasurer were the same person. Guess what happens when, who collects your taxes? The village treasurer. So if you're the school board treasurer, you have to sue the village treasurer to get your taxes. You can't do that. Other than some of those, and there used to be an attorney general's opinion that listed these things. That's the kind of conflict we're talking about. If somehow your student discipline was tied into the justice of the peace thing, maybe, but otherwise, I don't know. But again, if you're sitting in an expulsion hearing, and you've got a kid come in front of you for a breach of city ordinance, you probably shouldn't be sitting on one of those too. You know, this is, most of this is common sense, but sometimes we tend to forget about it, and so, kind of the refreshment. So that's the topics I want to talk about. So what I also was to guess was, are there just any other things that I uncovered that board members want to talk about before we open up to the audience? Well, Jim, you have potential problems too. You're making arrests as a law officer, and because of that, there's an expulsion hearing going on. I'd probably ask you to leave.
That doesn't, though, um, those circumstances don't allow James and Isaiah to hold those two offices. They could still do those, but just, um, just exclude themselves when decisions...
What? When something that would obviously the people, but how can you do both? And how can you sit in judgment as a justice of the peace and as a school board member of the kid? Because what may happen is, you may have learned something in one of those two positions that you wouldn't otherwise be entitled to know. How do you separate that off? And why put yourself in that position of the possibility that if you didn't refuse yourself, somebody gets off on a technicality? Most of the time, there wouldn't be any problem between the sheriff's office and the school district, almost doesn't. If James makes the arrest? Yeah. I'd say, you know what? The circumstances there would indicate there's a high probability of bias. Why? Because James could have voted, oh, I'm sorry, my arrest wasn't any good enough. Board member, I, no, you don't want to be in that position. Whether it was or was, if somebody makes an argument, saying, you shouldn't have been here because the sheriff's office made a mistake, you shouldn't be in front of the board in an expulsion. Now, the board member's going to vote up, oh, Jim, and James, which capacity? So it's that kind of thing, that when you sit and analyze it, it becomes pretty obvious. But sometimes, a- as you start, you don't always think about it. So the point isn't to say that anybody's doing anything wrong, the point is to say, you just have to stop and think a second. And I've done this with an incident where a police liaison officer was in the school, and I had to give advice to the principal. First thing I did was just said, officer, please leave. Why? My client is the school district. I've got lawyer time privilege when I'm talking to the principals. I'm not sure I'd have it if a police officer is sitting in that room. I was not going to run the risk that somehow the advice I was giving to the school district, and the conversations they were telling me, were going to all of a sudden no longer be presence communication, because somebody else was in the room that shouldn't be there. And that's a tough decision to make to say to somebody, please leave, when I want the cooperation of the police department. But the officer understood why, because I explained why. Yeah, I understand. Err on the side of doing things to protect the school district. We're fortunate we don't run into all that, huh? Any others? Audience? Go ahead.
First of all, thanks.
You're welcome.
Very informative. Appreciate that. A couple things, um, when you open, you talked about, um, your, your client is the district.
Yeah.
So, um, and you use the terms advisory, interpretation, opinion, persuasive. What, how do you define the district? Is that all employees?
No.
Just what we have up here?
It, it is the entity that is called the Wisconsin High School District, which is a body politic and corporate, okay? It's an entity. It's kind of amorphous entity.
Right.
But there is an interest of the school district that goes beyond the interests of board members. There's a long-term interest. I will give you an example from a prior superintendent, a long time ago, who wanted to take trophies out of a trophy case. It was probably in the interest of the school district to keep those trophies there. What's the interest of the school district in doing that? It's the history, it's the feeling, how do, how do you do that? Well, the interest of the school district is being able to get people in, to do common things for the good of students. How you define that is kind of an amorphous concept, not always easy to get your hands around, but that's what it is. So I have to look at, what's, what's in the long-range interest of the district? What's in the short-range interest? What do we get by doing it? Do we create more problems? Maybe in the short run, we do, in the long run, we're better off doing something. It's that kind of looking at interest. What, what's our goal? Our goal is students. Part of that goal is, you don't want to tee off a community in the process of doing something. Because when it comes to referendum time, and you need a new building, you want that support. That doesn't mean we pander to people and give them what they want, but at the same time, those are some things you would consider in advising the district, and I do. I grew up in Stone, Wisconsin. I grew up when there was a fireman's ball, okay? My neighbor was the fire chief. His son was Thomas Sawyer. True story. I know what communities are like. You know, when there's a fire, and you see the guys bring the milk tanker trucks in because they got to go out in the country, empty their products, get water out there, that's what the community does. Those are the kind of things you think about when you say, I represent the district. How do, how does all that play? Not always easy.
Yeah, no, I agree. Um, the other question I had for you, and I think this relates more to who in the district does this, but you talked about documents being releaseable under request as part of a open records request, and I think that's a little bit, you know, you gave some definition there, but it's somewhat of...
Yeah.
Like you said, right? So who in the district does that?
Generally, the superintendent. He's been designated the record custodian for that.
Okay.
Unless the records are all him.
Yeah.
That falls to the clerk.
Okay.
The board clerk.
And, and, in many school districts, it is technically the board clerk. I've yet to see where it hasn't been delegated either to the superintendent or some office personnel to do it. I, one clerk had nothing else to do. She enjoyed doing that. Most clerks don't have the time to go through all those records.
Well, that's all I had. I'm very flung, I wish more people were here today. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure. Anything else people have questions on, up here?
I, actually, with having new board members with the past two years now, how long has it been?
For new board members?
Yeah, like...
You're, you're on your second, Isaiah, you're on your third, and of course...
Second.
I mean, is this something where, like, if there's new board members every year with elections, is this something of what you did tonight, made it an annual thing?
Yeah, you can, the school boards association also runs good programs. There are other programs that are run, though. The reason for not having me come on every year is I cost more than sending people to the school board meeting, God frankly. And so, you do it once in a while, because I think I can tailor it, because I've got a long history with this district. And so, I know some things that I would think help inform what I do, and it's up to the board, whether they want to do it or not. It's easier in some respects for having me to come out here for an hour and a half or do whatever, than just sending people to Milwaukee or Madison or wherever they're running them, taking the time and everything else, so. That's a board decision. I'm always happy to do it, because I always learn from them.
I mean, usually at any school board training that was we put on, there'll be at least one section that talks about legal type of things. So if you want to attend that, and they're pretty informative, they're on a pretty good program.
Yeah, they do. I worked for them for 12 years.
I actually went to the one this past Saturday, and all of this information was covered in about three hours, so it was, and even then we ran out of time. So it's very interesting.
Their, the state bar usually puts on for open records, public meeting law, they usually have dates, about a seven or eight hour day, and that's updated. So the people who go to most of those from the state bar are experienced in this topic, and there's always something new going on.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody on the board? Okay.
Thank you guys.
All right. Ten minute stretch, and we'll get ready to get set up, and... Yeah, full recess for a couple minutes. I want to welcome Brad Simonsen again, um, from HSR, he's going to be presenting on two projects... He's going to be presenting on two projects, uh, providing some updates on the pavement project as well as the heat down. So thank you, Brad.
Glad to have you down. Um, again, just to update you on the, on the chiller cooling at Maison Elementary, there's a pre-bid walkthrough, um, coming up on this Thursday. And that's where we'll come down, Jake will be down here and we'll talk, we'll meet with contractors on the site, walk through the building, answer all the questions, um, that they might have and, uh, and get, get a pretty good detailed, um, listing of what subs might start to bid on it. Um, they all won't come that will bid on it, I don't think, but most of them will. Um, and then from that, what we'll do is have an addendum going up, going out, um, within a day or two after that meeting, clarifying some of the questions that came up during, during the walkthrough for the final bid, preparation for part bits received in the final bid. So, um, and that's the following Thursday.
And I asked Brad, a couple vendors have caught, contacted me. So if I'm contacted and I give the contact information to Brad or Jake, it kind of becomes a project. I think Brad simple sees out everything. And so then they'll also, they're aware, I know one spoke to me the other day and said, thank you for letting me know. And, uh, you know, with this project, sometimes the project, there's a primary contractor and then they have people lined up to do the subs. So that's, you know, how should I put it? That's generally how this project works out.
And it's important and Mark's been helping us with that and air and getting, making sure we try to get all the local, um, connections and people in, that might be interested in it locally, um, information, you know? And if there's anybody that wants to call us, me, Jake directly, that, that you know of, have them call and we'll get the info to go.
Okay?
Do you have a, a number of people who will be coming through the walkthrough or?
We don't know who's coming yet, but, um, you know, it's advertised and we've made phone calls specifically. Um, so we'll have a variety of people. Some kind, like, like Mark said, uh, main mechanical contractors, there might be subcontractors, sheet metal contractor, that kind of stuff, um, that will be in, coming to the meeting, I'm sure. And who knows, the list sometimes is five, sometimes it's 20.
And we had four bids on the equipment. The thing, like electrical components, sometimes it'll attract a certain type of, like some electricians who controls only, some are wiring and just kind of also becomes on what they're wired for.
So that's, that's the cooling project. Any questions there? Any more questions? The, uh, the parking lot down, um, gave you a couple drawings. We, we looked at a variety of scenarios. We were looking at some kind of crazy ideas about how to separate buses and cars. Because, you know, usually you try, like, try to, like, try to do that, but sometimes it's not imperative that you do that if we can get everything else to work right. The main thing is we want to have a safe situation. And, uh, and, and we think that you kind of nailed it down into two schemes. I think one of these two schemes is optimum for you guys in terms of safety and security, of course. And then also flexibility, you know, trying to, you know, things, things change. You know, we, we hate to, sometimes, and, and this was a good scenario, where if you literally designate a bus area and a car area, and this is the only place it can happen, sometimes you design yourself into a box and it becomes, um, a negative thing over time because you lose flexibility. And I think that's an important thing that I want to stress here. Now, the first one that's on your sheets is something, I don't know if you saw last week, we modified it a little bit, but. We were looking at, um, again, getting every, all the parking diagonal. That's a primary focus that we have. We looked at getting one entry point, getting a cleaner circulation system around here, in and out, okay? And then also, unlike the one before where we pushed everything a little closer to the building and gained four rules of stalls, I think it's, I kind of heard that we didn't need that, quite that much parking, even though in this scheme we're increasing the parking about 25 stalls in this scheme. But, but we put all the diagonal parking facing the school and then just had a, a single driveway along the highway. Now, as, as I got thinking about that, I'm saying, what's the real value of this driveway back here? Not a lot of value there. So that's kind of where this next scheme came into play, where we, we thought, okay, we need to try to maximize and create a flexible drop-off area for buses and cars. So we, we looked at this driveway back here and said, well, why doesn't this driveway just move up here? Then we can double it as a driveway plus create a wide mouth so that we can have a drop-off, potential drop-off area along here. Um, we're still coming in here with one driveway, drop-off area by the front door potentially. Also, we're showing too little, again, I mentioned to Jim that we don't want to be presumptuous in what future endeavors you may want to take on, but we want to provide the flexibility so that you can do something around your building. Because you're limited in what you can do around your building for additions potentially. So what we've done here is plopped in a new gym and a new auditorium, okay? Just to give you a feel for scale. And the space that we want to try to maintain for, for those kinds of flexible future endeavors that you may have. We still have out here too, like we talked about in the past, potentially here. We still have some room down here, you know? We have a little bit of room even in the front building if we ever wanted to take something on there, like expand some classrooms or something, something crazy like that. But, um, but again, we took off this little bump here. You know, right now it's a little recessed indentation for cars. Took that off just to keep it clean and simple. Designated a drop-off area here. We could say that this is going to be buses, this is going to be cars or vice versa, whatever you feel like doing. But we got a safe area there. And then we just got the parking facing out here. This is all diagonal. All diagonal here. And our traffic flow starts to really start to make some good sense. Here we gained again about 20 stalls on this plan and it seemed like probably comfortable number for, for, for you. And then we certainly have a potential here for some future parking down the road. And now, now we look back here about bringing traffic back here, cars, buses, and it got very complicated and very expensive because there's a lot of piping, electrical, all kinds of stuff that the dollar signs are just adding up real quick, okay? So we said, let's just keep it simple, take a simple approach and, and go for it. So this is kind of the plan that we're starting to recommend to you. And now, in terms of numbers, costs, okay? We kind of looked at it in, in different categories. And when we bid it, we want to try to design the bid package so it's flexible and you have some choices to make after we go bid soon, okay? We're thinking that if we just crush, pulverize the paving, remove the paving, just re-grade the basis there, okay? And then, um, new paving, some places it'd be three inches, some places it'd be five inches thick. And then you see right here, we got a dash line. We want to put a pipe underground there right in front of your building, collect all the downspouts, underground, of course. Get it, get it off grade, get it underground so we can control it. And then bring all that water down to this ditch, drainage ditch, which will take it wherever it's going to go, it's out of your way. It's not going over parking lots, it's not going over sidewalks or any of that stuff. Or more importantly, probably not sitting next to your building, okay?
What size, what size are you going to use?
Yeah, it's probably going to be an eight inch at least. And then these probably be sixers. You know, again, we haven't done the actual engineering calculus yet, but now that I'm just thinking about it, it's probably going to be way bigger than any.
Why not go straight towards the highway?
Pardon me?
Why not just go straight towards the highway with that, the ditch toward the highway?
Because we want to get it up here, so we, it's just a little more efficient than collecting it all in one spot in one pipe, rather than have several pipes going out. That's what we're thinking now anyway.
Well, I think what he's asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you're going to go straight out with that pipe
Yeah.
towards.
This to the north.
Oh, you're going that?
Going to the north. Is that actually where you're going?
Yeah, I did everything.
Yeah.
I was standing grabbing workers every week, what is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Part of it is if you remember the topo map, which we could get, there's not a lot of elevation change from the, the highway 14 with, with the diagonal lots where we have parallel parking right now. That was also an issue in terms of the drainage. So that's something to consider also. So that would go underneath the existing road, right?
Yes, it would.
That would go underneath.
Underneath all these sidewalks. We have some patching along here and some of the sidewalks underneath this parking lot.
Right.
To this ditch.
And the sidewalk, you're taking out the whole section after where it dips in, you're going to go straight across all the way to the corner, right?
So at the athletic entrance.
Yes, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We looked at all kinds of crazy ideas about trying to get a car drop-off in here, trying to make better use of this base, this corner. And then it just, it got so complicated, it, it was very, it didn't make any sense to us. So, because we were trying too hard, is what I felt we were trying to do. Whereas this is just more of a natural.
So why would we lose that loop on the middle school parking lot there? Why would we lose that loop?
This thing?
Yes, if we don't, if we're not going to expand anytime soon. Um, that is so convenient for buses to be able to just.
Convenient? Maybe we, maybe we make this a little bit of more of a curve. But I think it, it, it complicates traffic flow because then when you get here, you got to, if you're a car, you got a choice to make, you know? Am I going this way or am I going this way? I like to try to design a parking lot so folks don't have to make too many decisions. And it, it just works naturally for them. So they're going to come in here and if they see a parking stall here, they're going to grab it. If they, if they, they know they can't go in here, so they're, they're coming around here if they want to try to find somewhere here, otherwise they're down here.
Do we know what the bus flow, is the bus flow going to be out Olson Road? And still?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So back to the cost estimate. If we do pulverize, remove the blacktop and just re-grade the existing base, um, and then do the drainage pipe and all the sidewalk repair and then redo all this up here to, we're thinking about 5.25 to 5.75, um, a hundred thousand dollars, okay? Um, if we decide that we need to, now this is scenario one. Scenario two might be if we think we need to remove the paving and remove the base as well and put new 12-inch base in, compacted, engraved, put new paving in, we're, we're talking about, plus all this war, uh, sidewalk and curb work, we're talking about five, 750 or so, okay? Now, a hybrid solution might be where we look at this piece and pulverize it, take the base out and, um, and put new base in, new paving. But then this piece, we just do pulver it, take, take the blacktop off and regrade. Or maybe we just regrade this piece, you know? Or, 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 you know, maybe, maybe just do an alternate bid for everything back here or everything back here. You know, there's a few different scenarios we can lay out in the big package that we can get prices for you so that we can make some decisions.
Can I, is it?
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Can this be made by a board or are we going to open up the, peel everything back and look to see what's really there and then make decisions? I mean.
Then that may be the case too. I mean, we, we may, we may need to get into the project a little bit too because one of the things we're going to see is we're going to like a little contingency pocket money here for unforeseen things. Say we, say we take the scenario of, okay, we're going to look at this piece and just repave, just take the paving off and regrade and, and, but we got a pocket down here where we didn't get a board that's really bad that we need to take out. We just need to take it out and replace it with better base. That could be a scenario. So we'll get unit prices for all of that, okay? We get unit prices in the bids for removing excess base or removing, uh, unsuitable base and replacing with suitable base. We have all, we'll have unit prices for all that. So we'll have everything bid and it's just a matter of, once we get into construction, things might change a little bit, but.
Refresh my memory on the core drillings. I remember what was discussed, but where was each one and where was the real problem areas that you saw? Do you remember?
Well, there's, there's going to be problem area up here.
Okay.
Okay, we know that. I can't remember back here.
That was, that was pretty solid.
Pretty solid back there.
There's a little bit of a question on the closest to the highway 14, because that was new, that 30 feet was additional. So that's the, the other what-if area.
What about, um, right after you make the turn from the middle school to the high school, right there? About halfway to the middle through the up, like right in there, there's an area there that's, that's bad. And then about the same spot on the other side.
Over here or over here?
Both, actually.
Oh, okay. Cores were, there were three cores.
Yeah.
There were, there was a core here, going on memory core here, here and here, here, and then we switched to here.
Yeah.
This, this was pretty solid and uniform. There's a little bit of stuff, there's a little bit of what-if or perhaps it's a guess you should fill here. But this is, I mean, you can see the repatches too. And that's, that's where we've got it. The question will be, will we go thicker too? Once it's regraded and reinforced, then what's your thick, what's the thickness? The pavement, if I went on memory correct, is about on average four to four and a half, maybe a low area of three and a half and some of it.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Two things. First question, do we have to do the back and then all the way back behind the school? Yes, that area through there.
Don't have to.
The one area, to remember though, that the road out to Olson though is new. So we, where Brad's finger just was, this, this could be a, a no or a, as a C. So this could be, this could be what Brad talked about, the high end. This could be the hope that this is, uh, to replace, grind up and place, you know, fortify. And this could be another time.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, but that's, yeah.
The big thing too, love what's going to make this a good final part is it's not piecemeal. We've got one complete base that's regraded and then paving uniformly so that it's not, we're not piecemeal of the thing. So that'll make it, you know, work together better even a little.
Can we, you've got, um, four handicap stalls here. Am I assuming correctly that the sidewalk area is going to stay in place or is that going to be gone? Because we were talking about maybe putting, uh, putting the handicap zones right where the concrete is where everybody parks anyways.
Let's see, how many?
In front of the stalls out here.
You know where everybody parks now.
Where the light rack is.
Oh.
There's that concrete, everybody parks there anyways. What if we made that the handicap zone and made those into regular?
The question is, I, I would ask is proximity, is that any closer?
Where are the, where are the ramps on that side?
Well, no, but.
It's closer to the door.
Well, no, but I'll point out two things. One, we've, we're trying to go diagonal. Now we just introduced parallel parking.
Yeah.
So, so, I mean, I think that's the first question. And, you know, because we're trying to direct people where to go. So now if you go to, you know, I'll call it parallel parking, you know, you, you change that. So is there an impact is my question and is it any closer?
Well, is that, is that area with the concrete going to stay as it is right now?
No, that will get ground up and then we'll re.
But all they are is lines, that's all.
Yeah.
And, and if there are handicap spots, then that distinguishes them one with more, it's kind of hard to get there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's an option. I think it's just what you're optimal with. That's really what it comes down to. Because I would prefer not to have, but the, actually, what I would say is the, from my perspective, no, because when the buses come in, now the buses may be coming up to the curb now instead of slant. But if the buses are at slant, that's when people aren't parked there.
That's true.
And so, I mean, it's, that's the balance of 7:30 to, I'll call it seven to four and then everything else that happens.
Would there be a need to change the position of the light poles on? Would there be a need to change the position of the light poles on either one of these?
And we're hoping to have a bid package put together so we can receive bids, um, the first week in May, I'm thinking, or...
June?
Or June, yeah.
Great, how did they go last week?
The first week of June, because I think you guys were, we've kind of set up already one of the first, one of the eighth.
Yep.
And we're hoping to get, get this in front of you on the eighth, okay? And then, well, we should be able to do that. And, um, we get the bid, so bid opening might, bid opening game might be, um, like the fourth or something like that.
So yours, uh, five hundred and twenty-five, five fifty, five seventy-five number?
Yeah.
That was, did that include that back and there and all the way towards the back?
Yeah.
Okay. Because if we didn't have to do that and we approved the five, say five seventy-five for an easy number, that could be our contingency.
Could be.
Money, where we could say, oh, no, we need to do another fifty thousand dollars worth of whatever in the middle school parking lot. Well, guess what? That's the first thing that gets cut is that back area. It doesn't get a lot of traffic, you know?
And I guess to clarify, tonight is what, what are the constructs of the bid?
Right.
Not the dollar mark. So, we would do, I'll call the, the first bid is the grinder, grind and replace bid. The second one is the take it all out bid.
Yep.
And then, you know, I had suggested, I think some people, you know, do we have to do everything where you do middle school lot as a full, the, the high school as a grind and replace, and then the staff, and then that includes Olson Road?
Yep.
And then the staff parking lot backwards is a no, is, is nothing. Now, my question, Brad, was contingency fund usually on a project like this, wait, ten percent?
Yeah, that would be good on a project like this because of the unforeseen soil conditions, that's the key there.
Well, I, I would be worried more, like what he was talking with the seven hundred and some thousand, um, I would be more concerned about that number than I am about, you know, that, that's a lot, that's...
Oh, I don't disagree, that's why you have C, but we, the question is, you know, who knows? I mean, I, I know people are busy right now, but by A and B, those are the two, I'll call them base options, and then what do we want?
So do we, when you say that, do you want the middle school, high school, staff parking and back all with grind and then all with, uh...
Replace.
Grind and replace and whatever?
And then the C, the third one would be grind and replace in the middle school parking lot, high school, replace, and then staff lot behind, you know, another day.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And part of that is, is that, you know, it's kind of, think of this, if you go back to what we've done with the roofing, is we have to get a big piece done, and how much can we do, you know, we can't do everything, we, we knew that with the roof. Same thing here, we'd like to think we could do it if, if everything was perfect, you know, even Tom, when you asked before, can't we just put two inches on top? That would be great if we could, you know? We know that answer's not an option, but then I think we start to treat this as, as a roof, like the roofs we have, which is, if we, the goal is to, if we get this work done, then we get this op, then we open up opportunities for predictability, or, you know, and we can deal with bits and pieces as needed. Because, you know, we don't have as much traffic in the back, and right now our, our staff lots, you know, lightly used.
And it's in decent shape.
And it's in good shape, I mean, that's on top of it, I mean, I mean, but, you know, like track, you know, like the track though, you don't ever want something to go too far, so...
Right.
And I think you just start putting it on, what would it look like, you know, or could, what parts could we do, and, you know, and I get it, at least listening to the pavement guys last year, you know, the best way is to pull as much as you can straight, I mean, that's the other part, so, you know, have it continuous so that you have a uniform base and a uniform top. And the other part of it is not to be missed, and remember that this isn't all pavement, it is drainage too.
Yes, drainage is a huge part of this.
Yeah, and that's why, if you notice, and it just, not everybody was there when we negotiated one of our, with the JRT Topnut Roofing, we got a credit on the, on the graph, and I'm not, you know, it's fifteen hundred, but, you know, that's fifteen hundred that, you know, went into fund balance, so that's why our, our turf is not repaired because we'll be right on top of that.
Yep. But if we, we want, that's probably, we need to make sure the water's getting off this paving, because when water sits on paving, it's not good. There's the last year of the law. And it's flat out here, so it's tricky, but we'll get it.
How did you design what you're, where you're, how do you decide on four handicap spots?
It's cool.
It's just, it's just setting with the cool dogs.
It's a cool requirement, so many percentage in total. Okay?
Option one, um, with the, um, the student parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Would it be possible to, to not allow the students to park closest to the building? So the buses could unload there? Do, do they unload now in front of the high school?
No, no.
Do they all...
Everything's right here.
Yeah, everything's right there. And we'll be closer now, Jim, we'll be closer on this side, on the high school side now too.
They do pick up and drop off athletics.
Yeah, correct, we're, we're talking A and P M.
Right.
Yep. Yeah, we use that as athletics, and we have two, we have two buses in the evening that line up there for the sister students.
Okay. So we're out of our way then, we're...
Do people want a warm, I mean, I'm just gonna check in, 'cause I heard this a couple times. Is it, are people wanting a little rounder loop here?
I, I think it's a very good thing to have, just to give you that extra whatever.
Okay.
Cindy, we're talking down, when you keep going around, keep going, keep going, right there.
Yeah, Brad, can we, is there...
Get rid of that, yep. Okay, we talked about that, Mark, you mentioned that.
Yeah, something to talk about at the next meeting, yeah, yeah. But the, what I wanna remind people here, this part, my group, if I can borrow your breath, this part right here, this is it, we can't do anything else. That's, I just wanna remind, remind people, 'cause, you know, we look at this and go, what if, well, this is the ditch and the property that way's not ours.
Yeah.
So basically, what you need tonight is just a consensus to get this out to bid on what we're looking to bid on, and then they'll approve it afterwards.
Yeah, this would, you know, this is all contingent, I mean, things come in, you know, someone says three, you know, some, some number that we're not comfortable with, that we're not bound to.
Right.
I mean, we can argue where we're gonna put the lines later, that's a tough, right?
Exactly.
So is everybody comfortable then with bidding then three different ways? There you go.
Perfect, thank you.
You bet, thanks for coming on.
You bet.
Make a motion then to record.
We don't need a record of this yet.
So thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Only if you use more.
Thank you.
Well, do I see, um, thirty-seven or just Jake?
Jake probably is coming down, but if I can tell, I mean, definitely.
Understand.
Okay, moving on, personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the fifteen, sixteen extended contracts? Do I have a second? Any questions?
So it just says a refresher that is Kurt Wong, I believe for ten days, and, um, our LMC specialist, Melissa Hill for five. Same as last year.
Any other questions? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah? Yes. Oh, yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the two thousand fifteen summer school appointments?
So, second.
Thank you.
And I'll add that, just so you know, you have a replacement, there's, there's an update for you, so added one more staff number based on middle school size.
Now, next year, we're gonna start offering enrichment?
Well, that would be something if we're gonna do, we're gonna talk about starting at the next curriculum meeting.
What was the question? I'm sorry, I didn't...
Would we consider enrichment, and we just have to study, you have, people have to understand what it looks like, so, and I, for it, but the planning might starts tomorrow, in order to get it done. That's okay? I don't, or June one, okay?
Yep.
Question on the strength and wellness?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, rate of pay is different than the others?
Uh, it was based on, um, how should I put it? Ryan Bell would be at twenty-two, the other one is, uh, non-certified staff.
So that's the average then?
Well, Ryan's would be, if you wanna add on that, Ryan is a certified teacher. You need a certified teacher in order to get reimbursement from state, from the state. Sometimes Dale or one of us has helped supervise, that is acceptable, but a Ryan's be part of it, so that would be different, I just, thanks for the question, yes. And that's what, for the, um, same thing, uh, educational assistance, since their work for hourly employees, if your work is the same as what it was during the school year or you treat them the same, one person isn't a regular employee, so we would pay them at what we pay for, you know, entry level educational assistance. We have one more educational assistant this year based on student need, um, as you can see, the number of students, um, we have, uh, we will monitor kindergarten also and provide an update, so we'll, we'll go from there.
Anything else?
I just wanna commend Brandon on helping solve it, you know, that he's done it several years and was a big part of the football program.
No coaches tried. So...
Is there any drop-in? We don't like any more students, Dave, for summer school?
Traditionally, no. You know, we are, 'cause in some, and staff know, you know, for some reason, numbers were low, I don't see numbers getting any lower than what they are, you know, and just, like I said, we may add one more section just based on student numbers. We anticipate a few more. The bigger challenge is, is that a student is attending, you know, half the program, so then, you know, it's like, okay, who's there, when are people gonna be gone, and some of that balances, remember, these are max attendance. What do you think, they have eighty percent in the summer? Is that a fair?
Yeah.
So, look at the number, classroom sizes, minus two or three, and that's, that's kind of the average daily attendance. We build based on, we, we record based on hours, actually, compensation is based on minutes, kind of a crazy formula, but, uh...
It's pretty random, though, I mean, some, some classes, everyone's there, everybody...
Yeah.
You know, the, the younger kids typically, attendance is pretty good.
Our, our older students, perhaps they need to make something up, and they're given an opportunity to get it done, you know, and you get your grade or replace the homework that needs to be, you know, finish the homework that needs to be addressed, we're also okay with that carrot too. Um, yeah, strength and wellness, uh, you know, we're always looking to improve, improve attendance, but that's another one where, that's a variable one also, so...
Okay, Jim?
Yes.
James? Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah? Yes. Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Anjel Haas as A B coordinator with thanks of service since two thousand thirteen?
So...
Do I have a second?
Second.
If you also wanna share, this will be on the next agenda, Anjel's gonna also resign from the musical, so, I apologize for, we didn't, we didn't see the notice, so that will be on the next one, but I just wanna let people know, if you, why is it on two in a row on our...
Okay. Jim?
Yes.
James? Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah? Yes. Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Mary K. Deese, middle school teacher with thanks of reservice since two thousand thirteen?
So, second.
Thank you. Questions?
Comment?
Comments?
Thanks to Mrs. Deese once again for helping out, her and I, I believe we retired the same year, and she served, uh, helped, helped the district out.
Yes, she served for two other years, one in a, a year-long subbing position, and another one was the, uh, the traditional sub of, hey, I'm here.
Thank you, decent piece.
She's a remarkable teacher and person. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Cindy? Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah? Yes. And I'll vote yes as well.
Just a comment to another June, I'll call me, um, along this, yeah, so...
Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Kurt Wong as middle school student council advisor with thanks of service since nineteen eighty-nine?
So...
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I think it's great loss.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah? Yes. Discuss possible action to approve open enrollment applications. Do I have a motion?
Motion, so...
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
So traditionally...
Nine and twenty-seven, Al.
Yep, traditionally, uh, fifty percent of the students that say that they're going to leave will leave, and a third that say they're coming in, uh, will come in, that's about our historical averages of them.
Maybe they'll just detach from our district too.
We'll have three fewer open enrollments this year.
Jim?
Yes.
James? Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah? Yes. Discuss possible action on dental insurance for two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
Well, Aaron, you wanna share on this or you want me to do this?
For dental?
Yeah.
Um, well, Mark, Clay and I, um, sat down with our M three rep, um, Bree, over multiple meetings and phone conversations, and we, looking at comparables to other, um, school districts, we didn't have quite as nice of a plan as, um, other districts, so we decided to ask Bree to go back to the drawing board and see what we could, um, do, so we also said we didn't wanna increase our premium in the fifteen, sixteen school year, so, um, based on planned design changes that, um, we discussed with Bree, and she came back to the table, um, we have three planned design changes and one just changes our benefit year. So we're adding checkup plus option, which allows enrollees to get, um, basically preventative services not applied to their annual maximum, so I gave the example of like the two preventative appointments would no longer be kind of towards the thousand dollars, they would be outside of it, so they'd have a thousand dollars to still go towards other dental services. Um, the other one is adding that orthodontic benefit of a thousand dollars, um, with the coverage at fifty percent, and this is a lifetime maximum based on the dependent, um, under the age of nineteen. So hopefully, um, that will increase some of our dental usage as well. And then the third one we added was evidence-based integrated care plan, which provides extra benefits for individuals that have medical needs that might impact their dental health, that they can also go and get that third or fourth cleaning per year that otherwise would've come out of out-of-pocket, 'cause it wouldn't have been covered, um, 'cause it was outside the two, so that one's pretty much, um, an addition that had really zero net cost increase on our plan, just because more than likely it's gonna have minimal use anyway, and it's just something that is a good benefit to offer our employees, looking at what we brought to the table. Um, and the fourth one is just changing our benefit year with all of these changes, our calendar, our benefit used to run January through December, and now it'll change to July to June, which is how all of our other benefits run, so, just kind of was a no-brainer with our planned design changes to make that change. So, as starting July one, these new benefits along with what we've already had in our plan will start for employees, starting at zero, so...
Those would be appealing additions.
Yep, so, we're definitely getting a moderate usage with orthodontic, 'cause we haven't had that before, and obviously, the Delta Dental doesn't have any information on like who would request it, because it hasn't been serviced. We don't know, um, how many people will actually use it, um, but based on our plan, between ages of seven and nineteen, which would be the most frequent... between ages of seven and nineteen, which would be the most frequent type age dependence using it, there's about thirty-four current, um, dependents on the plan, so we, we just don't know what the usage is gonna be, so this year is gonna be, kinda be a trial, looking at what the usage is gonna be, and, and dental is up and down every year, depending on if people need a whole lot of crowns or just cleanings, so hopefully, this'll, um, offer some better benefits for employees, and we'll just have to monitor to see what, if there's gonna be any premium increases in the future based on usage.
Okay.
Is this retroactive to nineteen ninety-seven?
Unfortunately, that.
You can always ask.
Ninety-eight maybe, but not ninety-seven.
I remember ninety-seven, I have my glasses put on a second time.
All right. Do you have a motion?
So.
Do I have a second? Okay. Thank you. Other discussion? Erin, Don, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action on liability insurance excluding property for two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
Couple things, um, and again, thank you to Erin for coordinating this bid. Uh, we, in the end, had two groups bid. I will tell you that one of the groups that bid did not file bid documents, so there is only one active bid, one bid that we agreed for, but we're, we're sharing that with you today. The reason why we've excluded the property component is because, uh, local government property insurance fund came back, and it was twice as much as the previous year, and so we will be entertaining some other bids. And what has happened is you, is you can, um, won't be surprised, is once there was an announcement that there would be a change, everybody asked for bids, and the providers cannot get bids out to people in a timely manner, but we're hoping in a couple weeks right now. So, our recommendation right now is to stay with EMC Tricor. Some of the numbers look different, but the coverage is different, and again, uh, the insurance company did not comply with our bid specs, but we recommend EMC Tricor.
What's the, uh, outlook for the, the government insurance for municipality?
They doubled it, so it's up twenty-five thousand, if we're to have to go with them.
You mean like the long-term range of what's happening with the fund?
I may have been in.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
So they went back, they went back to whatever committee legislated or whatever, Bureau, and, um, they said they are certainly going to, um, cut the, cut the cord on it. However, I think there's a, they extended the year of renewals and people that could come on the plan, however, obviously, when they went back and did their assessment and, um, looking at, obviously, there's gonna be a flood of people more than likely leaving the plan, but obviously, they're, in order to keep funding it, it's obviously the increase in premiums that we're seeing.
Yeah, there is a mandatory increase.
Right.
Yeah, however, Mark Klein asked for a, uh, an addendum to extend it, but it looks like no more than two years, but, you know, if everybody leaves this year, sure, people will say thanks, but.
So, because, uh, our property and how, um, with us being with local government property, if we choose to leave, um, we have, because they, they've obviously made this change, we have a sixty-day window that we can cancel our policy, however, it has to be a board resolution to actually leave local government, so hopefully, I, my hope is that we can get a couple more bids in in the next few weeks, again, as Mark alluded to, that they're just a high value, and with the property bid, they have a lot of underwriting, that they ask a lot more questions about the facilities, making, you know, what you have here, where you're at, um, so there's a lot more underwriting involved that I didn't know about before we got into this, um, so there's just more questions versus some of our other coverage. So with that, I'm hoping to have a board resolution if we end up choosing to leave based on other bids, um, before June thirtieth, to you guys, somewhere to say that we are leaving the plan. I did speak with somebody at local government, if we choose to extend it and we can't quite leave that June thirtieth window, um, they would just prorate our premium, you know, into the after July one, so there is some flexibility, but we do have, you guys do have to pass a resolution to actually leave the local government fund, so.
Okay. Do we have a motion to stick with, uh, Tricor for now?
No, Tricor remains, that's, that's separate from local government property insurance fund. There's two, two liability aspects components. I'll call it the people and the breaks. We're, we're working on the people, we're, we're asking approval for people.
Okay. Which is?
EMC Tricor.
Okay.
James? I clarified something, James.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Now you got me confused as all heck.
Recommend, we recommend EMC Tricor.
Yeah.
There you go.
That's what I said. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? No, please.
No more.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
All right. Textbook adoption.
Okay, so in front of you.
Discuss possible action on math.
In front of you, go to page two. You have two columns here with Go Math, K five, there's recommendations of thirty-five, eight oh seven, ninety-six is without manipulatives. Today, I, I received a phone call saying you may wanna consider manipulatives, and so Amy, Dale, and I have spoken, a couple teachers have reviewed the manipulatives, they have some, two, two products or two types. We're gonna double-check with staff, but that's why you're getting two numbers here. I'll explain from there. In grade six through eleven is the twenty-eight, two eighty-five, fifty-five, then we have pre-calc calc, you know, the five, fifty-three hundred forty-eight, ninety-one, and then for interventions with the math adoption, a lot of the intervention work can be done within the, the adoptions, um, and so we're recommending some additional for one oh five, and then two forty-five is listed. So, our range right now, and we need a little more feedback from staff, but so, we can get them here, and for negotiating purposes, what I would like, I would ask for is a motion not to exceed, uh, seventy-eight thousand dollars to adopt curriculum materials, and, you know, the, the manipulatives. If we need to purchase some additional ones, a couple staff members stayed after district leadership team to identify what they needed, and we're gonna just figure out, should we just buy a few things separately or buy the whole package, and so that's the difference right there.
Questions? All right. Do I have a motion to, um, approve math adoption not to exceed seventy-eight thousand?
So.
Second.
First, second. Time goes to Isaiah.
He's had a busy night, so.
All right.
All right.
Take one for the team. Jim?
Yes.
James? Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to approve the language arts reading adoption.
Oh, Amy, describe kind of the process, and then we'll get to the, uh, dollars and cents part of the presentation.
Okay, um, just like last time, I'd explained the math process and the reading language arts, uh, process was pretty similar in that, you know, we met with each grade level team, spent a day with me, um, we also met in K two, three, five, and six twelve groups as well individually, came back together several times as a K twelve group, um, the top two textbook companies were, um, Journeys and Benchmark for K five, uh, Collections for six twelve, um, and again, we wanted to try to align everything, because, um, we currently, um, aren't necessarily with the materials that we have used over the years in alignment, um, making sure that everything is in a scope and sequence. The teachers were, uh, very involved in, in the whole process, um, attending all the presentations and so forth, especially, uh, the K five did an extraordinary job with the amount of time that they put in, um, really wanting to do the right thing. It came down to, um, our K five had two different ways that they wanted to do it. Our K two wanted to go with the Journeys approach, which is more of a series, a basal approach, um, and my three five wanted to go with more of a readers writers workshop and kinda transition between that approach into the collections approach that middle school uses, so doing more levels and things like that, um, and all of us were very aware that we needed to, uh, we need to improve our writing scores, so that was also, um, in our thoughts. So, a majority of the meetings in the last two weeks have really been with the K five, trying to decide if we should go with the, the same series or break them into two, um, and done, I've done a lot of research and comparisons with both of those. The three five is very, um, believes very strongly in going to the readers writers workshop and going into the Benchmark program, um, and they, they're very committed to that. The, the one thing in our proposals that you'll see in a minute is that the Benchmark, uh, pricing doesn't include any technology at this time. Benchmark is a, a company that just, um, deals with literacy, so they're, they don't have science and social studies, so they're not a big company in the sense of having every subject level, um, so therefore, things are a little bit more expensive, um, due to that. It also has, um, a strong connection to science and social studies and, and more of informational texts, um, which is more Common Core-related, um, it's divided into three, a three-week unit, um, so it's not anymore reading, taking the test on Friday, reading, taking the test on Friday, um, things are much more divided up, and, um, we're not testing, testing, testing every single week the same way. One thing to point out is that K two students are learning to read, and once third grade hits, they're starting to, um, read to learn, so that's kinda where the transition takes place, um, in, in what they're reading and, and how they're going about that. We also researched schools that were doing both of them, there are quite a few schools out there that are in the textbook adoption process as well right now. In my I ninety, ninety-four meetings, it's been a kind of a hot topic with what are you guys doing, um, what do you, what are your top choices and so forth. We also have, um, intervention programs that we need to look into for reading. We currently piloted a, um, Reading Plus program for interventions for six, um, twelve this year, and we would like to continue with the Reading Plus intervention. We are also looking at K five, um, the LLI intervention program, which would be a one-time purchase with some training, um, and is one that is, um, widely used throughout the state, um, with interventions, and also goes along with the programs that we've chosen. We will also be doing training this summer as well, um, they'll have two days this summer, and then one after school starts again, um, and most of our early releases and professional development days next year will be devoted to a lot of our adoptions and our future adoptions, and making sure all of the current initiatives for next year, we have time to put all of them in, in place and reflect and have conversations about where we're at with all of them. And so, do you want me to talk about the?
I'll, I'll go through.
Okay.
So, as Amy alluded to, um, the preferred, preferred options at the grade levels, Journeys, K two is, they have selected Journeys, uh, grades three through five would like Benchmarks, and, um, six eleven would like Collections. And I wanna also add, being this is the second time around, um, this is, the reading language arts is our most expensive adoption. Seven years ago, the high school elected just to purchase some classroom sets, then purchase, uh, books, and this time they are, they'd like a little bit more of a scope and sequence, so therefore, our costs are gonna be a little bit higher just 'cause they're asking for books, so I'm gonna provide that perspective. In front of you, and, um, again, this is, in the end, I'm gonna ask for a, a motion to, to purchase reading language arts materials not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand, um, because we do want to show, in, in negotiations, and this was, uh, very fluid, in fact, at one point in time, when I was updating Tom today, that I didn't know if we would have this part on the agenda, but we wanted it in case we were ready, and we ended up being ready. We will get a slight reduction with the col, uh, Collection, she was not able to get final approvals, so we'll, it'll be a little less, but, um, again, we're just showing you, uh, the two things. One, uh, the textbook company that does Journeys is, you know, very much incentivized us to go K five, and that is with technology, so they really have said, hey, you know, we, we really like your business, they also, uh, sold us everything in math, too, so there's, there's an opportunity for them, and we get a little bit better discount the more we purchase.
Can you explain, uh, what you mean when you say with and without technology?
Sure, and I can defer to Dale and Amy a little bit better, they've seen it, um, so I'll turn it over to them on that part. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, with Journeys, um, it's, it's very similar to the Go Math, it's the same company, so they have everything on there, um, every, all the reading part, the writing part, um, everything that you can copy off, um, the grade system, the intervention part of it, so like if they take a quiz online, um, it automatically corrects it and also tells you what skills they're not getting, and can individually give you sheets, um, to get extra practice on those skills for each individual child. There's, um, it's kind of in individualized education to a point, um, with meeting each student's needs once they've taken the quiz or the test and so on. It's also documented, you know, all on the computer, it's, you can run different sorts of reports, it's kept from year to year, as long as we're in that program, um, so you always have that to refer back to. There's, uh, smart board lessons, um, interactive things, uh, before, during, and after the lessons, um, there's different games that you could do through those smart board lessons, um, there's also games and things, um, that are enrichment-type things that they can do along after the lesson or part of homework, um, access for parents from home, um, and so forth to those materials as well and different things. Benchmark, um, has technology as well, and it has some of that, um, of what I just said, they don't have necessarily smart board activities.
They're HTML-based, so they're web-based.
Yeah. So, um, there's a little bit less probably interaction with that, the student and the smart board in the sense of that, but they do have things out there. Our LearnPads work with Journeys, um, I'm not sure with Benchmark, I think we have to do some things. They both, writing-wise, you know, they can correct the writing, you can leave notes, so if a, a child writes something, the teacher can leave notes on the side and, and do their corrections right on the, the computer, um, and so forth. So, what we would, you know, be looking at, K two would have, if we went Benchmark with no technology, K two would have the technology, and Collections would have the technology as well, and Benchmark, um, would not, um, but we could purchase Benchmark with technology, but it's, it, it ups that cost quite a bit.
If you're wondering, what is that cost of sixty thousand? The, the negotiation, probably a little bit less, but that was the quote, what we, uh, went with, and Dale, both Dale and Amy met with grades three through five, and they, they feel very strongly about the Benchmark, they believe that this bring, gives them the best opportunity to, to make, address what they believe are the needs and to promote readers writers workshops, so. The reason why I'm asking for a range is that not to exceed, we just wanna double-check one more time. I'm comfortable with what they're doing, but I also, you know, if you're not, we would also like to hear about it. The, the difference, you know, some people would say, well, it's market, it appears to be an eleven thousand four hundred sixty-six dollar difference, but the really, the, the value is it's a thirty-seven thousand dollar difference, so. Our staff has said they understand that, they will use existing technology or other, other aspects to move forward, but, you know, what we're trying to do, what we learned with the math the last time, um, one with the notebooks or the workbooks, we paid every year, that cost us a lot of money in the long run. Our adoption of the math is cheaper now for the next six years than it was from two thousand eight to two thousand nine. eight to twenty fifteen. What my point being is that if you do it piecemeal, we're going to pay more. And I just want to make sure, you know, aware of it. You know, the biggest challenge for us is that we're smaller and so if you have more classrooms, the, the vendors can incentivize things. Oh, we'll give you a little bit more of this, a little bit more of that. And you know, I was communicating with a couple of our neighbors and Amy, Amy said talking with their peers, I think we've got it down to a, a realistic amount, but I, I will, you know, just so people understand this. Benchmarks per student is two hundred and thirty-four dollars, I'll leave the cents out. Journeys, K two is one ninety-one. If we were to use journeys, K through five, it'd be one fifty-six. And so the difference between two thirty-four and one fifty-six is the eleven thousand five hundred dollars. So.
The, the other thing I want to add is that because of the technology piece being so expensive and things, we met as a three five and we came up with what benchmark had for, has for technology and how would we address that if we did not have that technology? How are we still going to meet these needs? How can we do that with our, our kids in, in grades three through five? And so I, I do have a list. If you want to see it, I have copies. So I mean, we covered all of that because it was a concern of, of, you know, this is the technology age. And so they feel very adamant that this program will benefit their kids, that they can make up for that technology piece and that cost over time.
So we're recommending to make the curriculum adoption for language arts reading for one hundred and ten thousand.
I'll make a motion to, to.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars on language arts reading adoption.
Give a second.
Second.
And any further discussion?
I have one question. What is, it says the benchmark program has authentic text trademarks. What is, what is an authentic?
Um, or how do you explain it?
Kind of explain the difference between actual books that a kid would read versus a basal that might just have a few chapters from a book.
Oh, okay.
You know, so they're looking at, you know, it's really.
On whole story.
Yeah, on stories and full, you know, kind of short now, holes are short, readings.
In the series, they just include like five pages and it may be a thirty, fifty page novel or whatever it is. And so you just get that short snippet of it.
So are we just putting a lump sum and then we're still debating whether or not we're going to go with benchmarks or are we saying? We're just going to verify, yeah, prove it and then we'll just verify with staff. And if they're ready, they're still convinced, they're ready to go, then we're going to go.
I just have one more question. For the, the benchmark, for the other schools that you've discussed with, have they noticed any difference with the technology versus like one with journey?
We, we haven't really talked about the technology piece.
In talking with Chris today, he said that their program was more people would pick and choose aspects. So they have a base, they have word study, which is fancy for spelling. I mean, it's a little bit more than spelling. But there's a writing aspect and there's, they have one other component that I don't have in front of me. And so people are, you know, aligned to what their needs are. You know, in the future, what I'm hoping to do is that our adoptions aren't necessarily full scale, but rather, okay, we need to get better at this. We're really good at this, we'll reinforce, but then, you know, like I heard, as a district, we want to get better at writing. So let's say the next time around, we want to get better at writing. So then we're going to focus on what writing strategies, what writing materials would make us better, what training would make us better. And then we had to adopt there as opposed to use this going full scale, remove, scrape and, you know, that way our staff, how should I put it, when we're doing things well, then we can just capitalize on that as opposed to feeling like you got, you know, traded to, you know, a new team with a new set of goals.
And the, and the other thing we did too is we, we set up what it would look like over a week with journeys, with benchmark and with collection. So what types of things would be going on each day with the block of time that each grade had?
And that's going to be the principal role. That's one of the things we've talked about and Dale's been doing it, but that's been a conversation we'll probably have again tomorrow. Because, you know, in terms of how do we look for fidelity, how do we also support staff? And also how do we make sure that we don't create gaps because Mark Elworthy thinks, well, spelling, you'll eventually figure it out or there's spell check, you know, that concept, picking on Mark Elworthy, the teacher. You know, it's, it's those things where we can really, you know, focus on what matters.
Historically, Dale, is the reading, has, has the reading been more, would you say that the staff are, or are more focused on one particular type of instruction as opposed to the textbook? As opposed to, and, and that's why we see these differences.
There's definitely a difference K two and three five. You know, and I don't think it's the separation of buildings. It's how the kids are learning and what they need to learn at those grade levels. And, you know, the concept, it seems very simple, but it makes sense. You know, we're teaching kids how to read at those lower grades and at those, at those upper elementary grades, you know, they're reading for learning. And benchmarks in my three five staff, and I think we had four additional meetings with just that group of teachers, Amy and I and that group of teachers to, to talk about benchmarks and the differences between journeys and benchmarks and the technology piece and how we're going to cover that. So we've asked a lot of questions. How that program is laid out, the, it's what they've been looking for, just with the balanced literacy approach. Mark touched on it. We've been working really hard, I would say the last four years, because at the elementary level, we have a reading block. So it may be ninety minutes, maybe a hundred and twenty minutes long, but we have a schedule within that reading block as to what that looks like and how the teaching takes place within that, that block of time. It can work with, with a program like journeys, but it can also work with a program like benchmarks. Depending on the grade level you're in, the, the program we choose really can fit to our needs. There are, we're doing a target program. We've really evolved the last three years. Even though we have that textbook as our foundation, it is a, a balanced literacy approach with that textbook. I don't know if I answered your question, Jim, but.
Just, just historically, it's been, I believe it's the one area of textbook adoption that gets the most discussion.
By far, because it's such a complex topic. I mean, there's so much involved with the reading and the writings and the, and the different components within that, from the phonics work to the vocab to the, the word work that we do and the, I mean, there's just a lot of meat there that teachers have to be aware of and how kids best learn. It's, yeah, it is, and for good reason. There's a lot of discussion because it, it is a, it's not cut and dried always.
Reading language arts has virtually had the day.
Easily, yeah.
And the biggest question we've asked with both math or any adoption is, is it sustainable? And can we pass it on? So, you know, again, being upfront, that's, journeys provides a, a broader perspective, you know, benchmarks and, you know, there's about ten or eleven districts in the state using it right now. I'm sure they're hoping, you know, they're a newer company. As Amy said, they're only literacy, so they don't have a lot of diversity. But, you know, the areas that we want to get better in readers and writers workshop, our staffs can feel that this is the opportunity.
One concern that we had several years back was that the high school teachers didn't, not that they didn't know, but they weren't working with the lower grades, saying, here's what we need, it's not coming all the way up through. Is a process like this help put that all together or?
Definitely. Our six twelve really, actually this went way easier than we anticipated. They're all on board. They want to become teachers that teach the Common Core, that become twenty-first century teachers. And so that was kind of a, an attitude change, I think, from prior years. And for them to all be on the same page and, you know, having a book and kind of a readers writers workshop along with that as well. But yeah, they were very supportive, everybody attended everything in that sense. And we had, right before this, we had a K twelve department meeting with English Language Arts and, and I think that went so well, I mean, they want to have more of them because they're actually had time to discuss, this is what we need from the elementary. Elementary had time to discuss, well, this is how we do it, maybe this isn't what we have, we don't have time to do this. These are our needs. And so everybody heard what their needs were and maybe it made sense why this wasn't happening and so forth. And in overall, writing probably is the main topic that came out of there, that we just haven't spent enough time doing it. Because if you run out of time, that tended to be the one thing that they didn't do. And so, yeah.
In an adoption process, I think we need to make sure, remind you when we're getting training, if you'd like to see it. But the, I'll say the first phase, the end of first phase is the full, all day in service on October twelfth. And that's, that's where we'll get some opportunities here for training as well as, you know, how's it going? What does it look like? What do you need?
The other commitment that they've made for math and reading is that we will meet at least once a month as a K twelve, maybe more often within grade levels and, you know, different elementaries and stuff. But they've all committed to that, knowing that that's more time after school or whatever, but that we need to touch base and see where everybody is at and make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing and.
We've got teacher leaders that are willing to lead, lead that too, which, I mean, that's, that's huge.
One of the things I, I always considered, reading language arts and math to be two of the more important, right behind technology. But here we're going to spend, spend less than two percent of our budget on the most important area. And if, so if you think about it that way.
Only two percent.
The amount of work that, that your committees have done is just remarkable. And so I'll call the questions, Tom.
Motion on the table. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Oh, yes. All right. Discuss possible action to landscape and reseed the baseball field at the middle high school as well as demolishing the dugouts and repurposing the infield fence.
So recommendation is to go with lawns unlimited, not to exceed nine thousand dollars to complete this project. And the goal, if approved, we'd get it done now and we'll get some extra hose from the gun. This field, we would water the summer, let everything grow and then perhaps fall twenty sixteen and it would be available. And it'll take, I think that would be kind of our, our target date. If we can do it sooner, great, but we want to give it the best opportunity.
Will the youth teams be able to use it?
Well, that would be an excellent opportunity, but again, when the field's ready.
Of course, yes.
Yes, yeah. You know, what, what we're trying to do is it's a space that's underutilized. This is one more field.
And it's the back field behind the football field.
The stadium, yeah. The band field?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. So.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jim?
Yes.
James?
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
This is a sign, I've asked the middle school, high school administration, in the future, we have volunteer coaches approved before the season. And, and this came about, about, but I just, I'm just going to ask that we do it at the beginning and make it predictable.
Their motion to accept the donation of seventeen hundred dollars from the Mazamani Basketball Association to defray the costs of refinishing the Mazamani gym floors.
So.
Thank you. Big, big thank you goes out to that organization. Would you move it over there?
He's part of the association.
He's guilty by the association.
I didn't think the high school kids had to pay. Did they change?
They have an hour.
Last one tonight, shoot. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Oh, yes, as well. Their motion to accept the donation of five thousand six hundred and ten dollars and ninety-five cents from Culvers and Cross Plains.
So.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
What statement? Their goal for next year is ten thousand.
Nice.
Just for us.
What is it for?
This is FFA. They, I mean, our students, you know, I'm sure you're aware, but there's other organizations that on this night, I know for the community center, there was a, but Culvers is very much willing to partner with organizations. As, on Sunday night, and I will try to keep this short, they have, the owners managers have a rich history in farming. That's, that's, you know, number one for them. That is number one at fifty-six hundred and change, that is number one in the nation. So, and we are the recipients.
Five hundred and twenty scores.
Yeah. So, and, and at the end, and we're shooting for ten thousand next year. Very cool.
Yeah. Huge, huge thank you goes out to them as well. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Oh, yes, as well. Discuss possible action for sixty-six point oh-three point oh-one with Middleton Cross Plains Area School District for library media specialist support for twenty fifteen sixteen.
Yep. So what we've done, Mrs. Hill, Melissa is getting her certification and partner with Middleton Cross Plains for mentoring and it also makes us compliant in terms of highly, highly qualified. It's fantastic. Probably be doing it another year or two. But again, as we budget forward, we look to, if there's an opportunity to support our other employees, we'll, we'll do that too.
Can I just make a clarification? It's actually for this school year.
Yeah, for this year.
Yeah. Not fifty sixteen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh. So we just need to remove the sixteen?
The fourteen.
Support or discuss on four fifteen sixteen. Yeah. If you want a friendly amendment.
Well, note, there hasn't been a motion yet.
Okay.
So.
There will be one for fifteen sixteen.
Do I have a motion to blah, blah, blah? District for library media specialist support.
So moved on.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Our discussion. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
I'm with you.
All right. As you can see, I came up with the, for the, yeah. Sorry, I'm late.
Yeah.
Committees. Do we need any meetings coming up? Basically, policy stayed the same. Yeah. So I tried to put everybody where they wanted to be. So.
I would say the first committee meeting should be finance. Aaron went. Aaron, wouldn't you think the week of the first, should we do it? We're gonna do meet and confer at 6:30 with, on the first and the eighth with employee groups.
We gotta get our working budgets, what you're saying?
A working budget, we also will wanna update you on Tahoe. We have a Tahoe meeting on the 14th, so also, yes, working budget. You know, we just need it by the end of the month.
Yeah, thank you.
You wanna do the, so, we're gonna do it 5:30 on the eighth or?
What do you want to do?
5:30 on the eighth. We also.
June 8th?
June 8th.
5:30.
We're doing the meet and confer at 6:30.
Correct, move.
Okay.
Finance, budget and finance, June 8th, 5:30.
You want?
And this? And this one back here or you want to?
District office. And then on the eighth, we'll be in the middle school LMC due to the eighth grade promotion festivities.
Policy meeting.
How's that medical form coming?
It's actually an, not too bad. I kinda have the draft already.
Two things that I would like to discuss when we go to, when policy has a chance. Number one is verifying that the board will be, and this is probably a discussion the board should have, but talking about when it comes to head coaches, hiring head coaches. There was supposed to be, that the board interviewed the head coaches and there was a board member on the committee as well. So apparently that didn't get put into a policy. So I don't know if we wanna put that on an upcoming board.
Well, the question is, and I'm not trying to be cute and prolonged, do you want us a policy or is it an expectation, you know?
I think it needs to be a policy, but I think the board needs to discuss it so that we have seven members that agree with me, six others. So, and then the other thing I'd like to look at is charging per copy for open records requests. Jim and I were talking about this earlier and I said, you know, I always thought we did and I thought that, you know, there was certain amount free, but basically if there was copying cost, you got charged for it.
I would also like to wonder if we could possibly put time in there too, not for a cost, but just time, hours devoted to it, like a support for it?
And printing it out.
I don't know how that works. I know he said legally you can do it, but I don't.
Nothing to charge for. I'm just saying in a, this is how many hours this stuff, man hours.
Yeah.
I think it's appropriate to put how many, just people hours.
Employee hours.
Yes, thank you. Much better. Employee hours to compile this. Just to keep record and reference, not for anything for that.
Probably get ideas up and that will be part of their question.
That's okay, then they'll know what it costs the district to do those kinds of things and that's important. So, do we wanna have that as a board discussion or do we wanna send a policy? Board discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you want hiring coaches, you want that as a board discussion first or a policy?
Yeah, let's do it.
I'm just clarifying.
Yeah. So that we'll send a policy. We'll talk about open records requests at an upcoming board meeting. See which one is kind of the quickest. And then, yeah, go ahead.
The last two meetings, one started at 6, one started at 6:30. Is it possible to, to start a regular meetings at an earlier time?
I think you can be discussed.
We'll do it annually.
Ideally, you'll do it annual, that is, so it, I'm not, yes, you can do it. I mean, technically this would be, you can make adjustments, it's more predictability. So if we, if you wanna do it for, how should I put it? All the time, then you'd make that decision at the annual meeting, but based on needs, you know. But that's another, I think that's just another.
Sure, that's a line item on, is it, that line, a line item on the?
I'm pretty sure.
Because I know that when we changed from 8 o'clock to 7:30, it was just a board decision.
I think it then got rolled into.
Well, you gotta remember, this all started because we're a farming community.
Yeah, yeah, people were just wanting.
Yeah, that's who we are, so now we're transitioning it.
Yeah. I'll double, we, we'll research it for you, I believe that there is, it is denoting, so.
Okay.
It's, yeah, enough to.
We'll figure it out.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a second? Thank you. You get that up there?
So.
How was it, favor? Opposed. Motion passes 6-0.